Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hoboken Board of Education meeting. It's hard to believe that December is already here and the holidays are upon us. As a school community, we have so much to be thankful for, and I'd like to wish each of you a very joyous holiday season. So with that, Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 7, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Can we please take the roll call?
Ms. Katamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delatorre?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. DeCarion?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Okay, first, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening. This evening, we have a lot of recognitions. We have our Students of the Month here, so I'm going to actually pass the Superintendent's Report off to our Assistant Superintendent to introduce each of our principals, and then at the end, after our high school principal recognizes her Student of the Month, we will then introduce the Hispanic Culture Club from the high school.
Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students. At this time, we will celebrate students in all of our schools who have done their very best to show us their very best. We will begin with Joseph F. Brant and Principal Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection, and after pictures at the podium, we'll introduce to Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy. She will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenter. She will be followed by Principals Shannon, Abraham, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle School, Hoboken High School, respectively. Thank you. Principal Bartlett.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez Gomez. At this time, I would like to ask Seren Powell to come up and join me at the podium. Congratulations to Seren Powell, the Joseph F. Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for November 2019. Mrs. Gavin of the 4th Grade Team nominated Seren because she is as academically driven as she is well-natured and kind toward her peers. Seren shines her best light when she is working with a partner or in small groups. The manner in which she applies accountable talk techniques to engage her peers in the process is a skill embodied by a good leader. She is an asset to the classroom because she does not seek to outshine, but rather to radiate with others. Her enthusiasm for learning is contagious. She's an asset to the school community because she is a true role model. Seren differentiates her behavior to the various expectations of the school day, and she does so with a great sense of maturity and grace. As principal, I can always count on Seren saying hello whenever she sees me. We often have great conversations, and it is so wonderful to see her interact with her peers in such a positive and outgoing manner. She embodies the qualities we all seek in a 4th grader: being able to shine academically while being comfortable and at ease socially, so much so, she makes others feel that same comfort. Seren has been nominated as her classroom's Student of the Month every year since kindergarten, but this is the first time she is before the Board representing her school as the Student of the Month. Her focus and dedication earned her first honors this past marking period. Seren's positive disposition toward learning makes her a star student of every subject area, but she is particularly interested in the arts. She is a creative writer, an amazing artist, and very interested in fashion design. She recently took up violin playing as an enrichment opportunity. When asked what she wanted to be when she grows up, she said she wasn't quite sure yet. Mrs. Gavin wasn't surprised by her response, as Seren is a very open-minded individual. Her future will hold many choices for her. Seren is all heart and all smarts, and she will do amazing things. When asked about how it felt to receive this honor, Seren said, "I think it's pretty cool because I've never been the Student of the Month for the whole school before. I also think it's a big improvement because in the past, I've only been the Student of the Month for my class." It's easy to see that Seren has true leadership qualities, as she is able to recognize her own growth and improvement. Congratulations to Seren Powell, the Brant School Student of the Month for November 2019. And at this time, I would like to introduce the Principal of Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
I would like to congratulate Amir Rollins as the TG Connors Student of the Month. Amir Rollins is the TG Connors November Student of the Month. Amir is a kind, respectful, and diligent student who is always eager to learn. He has been working very hard in 3rd grade. He puts in his effort into everything he does. He takes ownership of his learning by always actively participating, paying attention, staying motivated, and trying his best. Amir has grit. When he is faced with a challenge, he does not give up and keeps trying. For example, when students in class were independently working on multiplication and division word problems, Amir became stuck on a problem, but instead of giving up or getting distracted, he asked to join the small group Ms. Lee was working with so that he can get some extra help. In the small group, Amir paid close attention and eventually was able to successively solve the difficult problems on his own. In school, Amir's favorite subjects are math and physical education. Amir is very athletic. He loves football. Outside of school, he plays football as the running back on the Hoboken football team. When Amir found out that he was the November Student of the Month, he was excited, surprised, and very happy. I asked a few of Amir's classmates what they thought of Amir being chosen as a November Student of the Month. Every classmate had such kind words to say. His friends describe Amir as cool, fast, funny, and very friendly. They describe him as being very helpful. Anytime a student needs something, they could always count on Amir. Ms. Lee shared a story that once Amir's friend did not have money to buy a snack at school, so Amir gave his friend a dollar to buy a snack. The friend said he would pay him back, but Amir said, "You don't have to. Amir is a good friend to all. We can all use a friend like Amir. Amir, we are so proud of you and to have you represent Connors Elementary School as November Student of the Month." And now, I would like to introduce Mr. Martin Shannon, the Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call Victoria Bates to the podium for the Wallace School Student of the Month for November. Wallace School is proud to recognize Victoria Bates, a 5th Grade student in Ms. Garcia's homeroom, as our Student of the Month for November 2019. Ms. Garcia nominated Victoria for this honor because of her effort during Language Arts, Math, and Social Studies lessons, her artistic work, and her overall wonderful disposition. Victoria is an excellent speaker, very creative, and a hard-working student. It is clear to see that she inspires others to be the best version of themselves in both words and actions. Victoria treats everyone with the utmost respect, and you can tell that she has big plans in her future. As the Principal of Wallace School, it is my goal to ensure that every student builds upon the positive character traits along with their academic skill set. Victoria is a perfect example of this. Her peers bear witness to her work ethic, respectful nature, and kind demeanor every day. She is an important member of our Wallace School community. Victoria loves to read and spend time with her family. She always comes to school prepared and with a positive attitude. Victoria received first honors during the first marking period. This was no surprise to those who know her. Every day, she aspires to do great things. Ms. Garcia exclaimed, "Victoria is a very elegant young lady that with no doubt will be a famous scientist or detective one day." Victoria aspires to become a detective with the goal of attending a successful university to make her dreams a reality. "Victoria is a delight to have in class," said Ms. Garcia. "I am so proud of all that she has accomplished so far. She is such an asset to the classroom, the student body, and the Hoboken community." Please join me in congratulating Ms. Victoria Bates, the Wallace School Student of the Month for November 2019.
Thank you. Congratulations. Great job, Victoria.
At this time, I'd like to call to the podium Dr. Abraham, Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
At this time, I would like to call to the podium Hoboken Middle School Student of the Alana Rivas was recommended for Hoboken Middle School's November Student of the Month Award by the entire Grade 8 faculty, along with Ms. Safko and Mr. Stasiak. Staff noted that Alana approaches each class with anticipation and excitement. She is quiet but leads through action by modeling the way for others. Alana serves as a constant role model to those around her and is always happy to lend a helping hand. She is respectful to her peers and all of the faculty at Hoboken Middle School. As the Principal of Hoboken Middle School, it is my distinct pleasure to award Alana Rivas with the November Student of the Month Award for Hoboken Middle School. Alana is hard-working, diligent, and enthusiastic in everything she does. She serves as a role model for students in all grades at HMS. Alana takes pride in being well-rounded and demonstrates outstanding commitment to both her academics and a lengthy list of extracurricular activities. Alana has an incredible knack for the performing arts. She plays four instruments, yes, I said four instruments, including the flute, piccolo, saxophone, and tenor sax. She will be participating in Montclair's Chamber Day along with her peers to highlight their outstanding musicianship. For the first time ever, Hoboken Middle School hosted its very own production of Suscool Jr. Alana and her peers truly set the bar with their performance. In total, over 400 staff, students, and parents attended the production, and it was a great success. All were blown away by Alana's amazing singing, acting, and dancing ability, including myself. You were truly amazing. Alana transfers the same work ethic to the classroom, where she has made honor roll for her entire tenure at HMS. Alana greatly enjoys PGP, where she takes part in the living classroom stewards. Students in this class recently visited Hoboken's unique and inspiring waterfront parks to engage in hands-on exploration of the Hudson River estuary. Alana and her classmates investigated the basic question, "What lives in the Hudson River?" If only you knew. As a class, they greatly enjoyed focusing on the biodiversity of the estuary, participating in a catch-and-release activity, including nets, traps, and hip waders, along the shoreline at Hoboken Cove in an effort to identify a variety of species and consider their unique adaptations. When Alana was asked her favorite part about this experience, she immediately lit up with excitement. She stated, "I loved having the opportunity to do something that most middle schoolers have never done before. It was amazing seeing creatures, organisms, and wildlife that we learn about in books for the very first time in real life. This experience made me feel like I was part of something special. We even called an eel." As if enough isn't already on her plate, Alana also participates in the HMS Community Book Club and the Math-infused Cardio Club. Through both of these programs, she challenges herself and everyone around her to reach their full potential. Her mother and I often laugh at the door in the morning and joke that their family should just live at the school. It's obvious that all of her time and effort are paying off, and we are extremely proud of the person she has become and is growing to be. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing your continued growth. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to call to the podium Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pica Pietra.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome up Shayna Suero, our Hoboken High School November Student of the Month. She has a fan club. Shayna is in the 10th Grade at Hoboken High School, and I have to say, I really did not know this young lady at all. I knew her face, I knew her name, but I really didn't know much about her. So last week, I sat with Shayna to have a conversation, and what I learned is that she's a deep thinker, mature beyond her years, she likes music, has a beautiful smile that lit up my office, and really has no idea what she wants to do. One thing she does know is that she is going to college. She would like to go away, but not too far away. She loves animals and thought about being a veterinarian, but was not sure if she was able to commit to that many years in school, but she hasn't ruled it out. The one thing I can tell you, that she is doing very, very well. She was extremely concerned. She was interviewing me about her GPA when we were sitting down. Mind you, her GPA is over a 3.75. She was inquiring how she could get it higher. She has another year and a half to improve, and I'm confident she will. I spoke to her teachers. Ms. D'Amico said that Shayna is always doing what is expected of her, and more. She completes all of her work, participates in class, corrects and assists students in her class, and she has the highest average in our class currently. Mr. D. shared that Shayna is a diligent student, comes to class on time, is serious about getting her work done. She is particularly interested in current social issues, always offering thoughtful perspective to class discussions. Overall, he said she adds a tongue to his class. Ms. Patel said that Shayna is a wonderful student to have in class. She has a bubbly personality and always has a smile on her face. She is always willing and ready to help out her peers and teachers without hesitation. As a student, she is always prepared with her learning materials, is focused and determined to be academically successful. Ms. Stevens had many accolades for Shayna. Shayna is a model student. She is cooperative, reliable, diligent, and focused. Shayna works hard and tries her best at all times. She asks questions for clarification and is always pushing herself to do just a little bit more. She is kind to others in class, often helping them to understand. I am impressed with her ability to work through frustration to figure things out. She often comments about the difficulty in finding meaning while annotating, but will go back to a passage and look again to arrive at her own connections, not just waiting for the answer to be given. The one question I asked, "Who do you spend your time with?", and she said immediately, "Rebecca." So I decided to sit down with Rebecca to hear about Shayna. She was smiling ear to ear as she told me that Shayna is her safe space, unbelievably supportive, and has a heart that is so kind. She makes you feel good being around her. She has a great sense of humor and an amazing memory. She said that Shayna reminded her that in the 6th Grade, she complimented her on her hair, and she also remembers her shoe size, which she sometimes doesn't even remember herself. She is not competitive, just a really great person to be around. Shayna shared that they cheered together, and now they are running track in the spring. Softball is also on the to-do list. You get the sense of a truly remarkable young woman when you hear a friend speak about her. For me, I'm so pleased that I had the time to get to know Shayna, from my own time with her, but also seeing her through the eyes of her peers and teachers. As a sophomore, she has time to continue her pathway to greatness. Congratulations, Shayna.
See, I knew the mic was moving, but I didn't want to ruin anything. Okay. Sorry about that. I'd like to congratulate my fellow peer Shayna Suero, and good evening, Hoboken Board members. Superintendent Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez Gomez. Hello, my name is Eva Gutierrez. I am a junior and the president of Hoboken High School Hispanic Culture Club. For the past three years, the Hispanic Culture Club has engaged in a random acts of kindness campaign for the entire month of December. A simple act of kindness can be anything from a compliment, helping someone in need, making someone smile, or doing something for your children. We are here tonight to share the kindness conversation with you. We want to thank you for the difficult and important work you do for the children of Hoboken. We are here to say in the simplest terms, thank you. Please join the kindness conversation with us and follow us on our social media platforms.
That was very kind, and we all appreciate your generosity. I'd like to thank all of our students recognized tonight and keep up the great work. Right now, we'll take just a few-minute break for any of the little ones that need to leave, and then we will move on with our business portion of the meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started again. Next, we're going to move into Board Committee Reports, and I guess before we do that, Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report?
I do. I do. I need to read two motions on the floor that we're going to add to the consent agenda. Okay, the first motion, "Resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education accepts a donation in an amount of $25,000 for the 2019 school year for the purchase of Chromebooks at the middle school." "Resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education authorizes the President and/or Business Administrator/ Board Secretary to execute appropriate contract documentation for the subject contracts and submission to the Hudson County Executive Superintendent of Schools Office as attached." "Student transportation for 1920 school year. Routes 113, 141 are being awarded to the Hudson County Transport. Routes 116, 119, 124, 144, 149, 166, and 173 are being awarded to Jersey Kids Transport. 142, 165 are being awarded to Four Diamond Transportation and Five Diamond Transportation." Also, I would like to read the Hoboken Board of Education Annual School Election, November 5, 2019, results. "That the total number of votes received by each of the following named persons for the office of Member of the Board of Education, for a Member of the Board of Education three-year term. Alex Delatorre, 4,202 votes. Joyce Simmons, 3,929 votes. Sheila Delera, 3,565 votes. Patricia Waiters, 2,839 votes. Chaweta Gershany, 2,643 votes. Personal Choice, 57 votes, for a total of 17,235 votes. Total registered Hoboken voters are 40,661. Total eligible voters, 10,686. That Alex Delatorre, Joyce Simmons, Sheila Delera, having received a minority of the cast at said election for the office of Member of the Board of Education for a three-year term. Please be advised that any request for a recount of the results may change this result. Any changes in the initial vote total will be reflected in a subsequent resolution. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true, full, and correct statement of the results of the school election held in the City of Hoboken on the 5th Day of November 2019, as presented by the County Clerk of Hudson. A witness thereof, I'm going to sign this."
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to curriculum and wellness.
Oh, excuse. Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought you were done.
office of member of the Board of Education, for a member of the Board of Education three year term. Alex Delatorre, 4,202 votes. Joyce Simmons, 3,929 votes. Sheila Delara, 3,565 votes. Patricia Waiters, 2,839 votes. Chaweta Gershany, 2,643 votes. Personal Choice, 57 votes, for a total of 17,235 votes. Total registered Hoboken voters are 40,661. Total eligible voters, 10,686. That Alex Delatorre, Joyce Simmons, Sheila Delara having received a minority of the cast at said election for the office of member of the Board of Education for a three-year term. Please be advised that any request for a recount of the results may change this result. Any changes in the initial vote total will be reflected in a subsequent resolution. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true, full, and correct statement of the results of the school election held in the city of Hoboken on the 5th day of November 2019, as presented by the county clerk of Hudson. A witness thereof, I'm going to sign this.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to curriculum and wellness.
Oh, excuse
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought you were done.
Also, there is one agenda item added to the finance agenda, and that's for us to receive a student from the Elysian Charter School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to curriculum and wellness. Ms. Delara.
Sure. The curriculum and wellness met on Wednesday, December 4th. In attendance were myself, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Kana. All items are up for approval. A few items that were up for discussion were the high school show. Excited to share that our high school thespians will be performing The Wolves. And we also discussed that on, I'm sorry, let me just find this, on January 28th, sorry, I can't read my notes are so small. On January 28th at Hoboken High, the district will be hosting a community-wide event called Digital Citizenship Family Event. This event will cover online safety for our students, cell phone policy within the district, and more important topics that deal with cell phones, internet usage, apps, and everything that has to do with our students and the internet. This event is funded by our Title I funds. Dinner will be provided. The event is open to all and it's going to be for students from K to 12. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Evans.
The facilities committee met on Thursday, December 5th at 3:00. In attendance were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamartori, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Callagie, and Dr. Johnson. The committee discussed that there are three facilities requests on the agenda. That's item 12.02. And we approve, we reviewed and approve all for approval tonight. And the living classroom at Demarest behind this building will be completed in the next week or two. And lastly, we discussed that the CUSAC review for facilities was held last week. Three buildings in the district were reviewed and not all buildings are visited each year. So this is standard and Mr. Callagie let us know that that review went very well. And that concludes my report.
Thanks. Finance, Mr. Kirian.
Good evening. Finance Committee met on Wednesday, December 4th at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Kana, Ms. Good, and Dr. Johnson, in addition to Mr. Clubfeld. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends all items for approval. The agenda contains approval for typical items such as payroll bills and bills and claims and financials, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And governance, Ms. Kana.
The committee met on Thursday, December 5th at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Kirian, Dr. Johnson, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items in Section 9 and recommends all for board approval. A few items I will highlight tonight. There were zero confirmed HIB cases. Under 9.01, Gloria Valentin, a custodian in Demarest, is retiring after, I believe, 17 years. Thank you Gloria, and we wish you all the best in retirement. Under 9.06, approval of appointment of school nurse Christina Bayer will fill the middle school nurse position for now from December 9th to June 30th, 2020. Under 9.12, approval of Coach Lorna Martinez for Special Olympics. She has coached this in the past. Students in our district from K through 12 and few other non-district students that are residents are able to participate in this exciting event. And that's it.
Okay, before we move on, I just wanted to point out one resolution on the agenda tonight, item 9.23, the approval of the opposition to the Elysian Charter School expansion. And I'm just going to read that resolution out loud. Whereas it is the responsibility of the Hoboken Board of Education to continually enhance programs, improve student achievement, and expand opportunities while managing notable increasing enrollment within our public school district and being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of Hoboken. And whereas the Hoboken Public School District is already coping with a state-imposed annual reduction of adjustment aid beginning in 2018 and totaling 3.8 million through 2025. Whereas imposing increased charter school costs on the Hoboken Public School District in addition to the aforementioned loss of state aid and on top of normal and expected annual cost increases will result in further budget reductions and program cuts in the district schools to the detriment of the district academic programs. And whereas recent and historic enrollment data clearly demonstrates a severe yet increasing segregation effect on the student populations of Elysian Charter School and the Hoboken Public School District, with Elysian Charter Schools serving a disproportionately low number of economically disadvantaged students and an increase in enrollment at Elysian Charter School will likely exacerbate and increase this effect. Therefore, be it resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education in exercising its responsibility to the students of the Hoboken Public School District must oppose the application to the Elysian Charter School to increase its enrollment and hereby authorizes the superintendent of the Hoboken Public School District to take necessary steps to urge the New Jersey Department of Education to reject that application. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
So at this time, we are going to just kind of quickly go through a presentation that you will find both on the website and a presentation that was also included in the recent edition of the Herald. Myself and our business administrator, Joyce Good, will go down to the floor and kind of narrate a little bit through the PowerPoint presentation. If there's anyone that has any questions on the Board of Education during or after, we certainly can answer those questions or we can answer the questions afterward. Okay?
Okay. So if you're okay turning during that?
Yeah.
You guys are fine. Microphone as well, so there's two of them.
Thank you.
Sharon, can you pass me the clicker?
Thank you. Okay, so this evening, we are going to go through a PowerPoint presentation that is on our website, but also that was presented in the most recent edition of the Herald. It's really a PowerPoint just to briefly describe and discuss some of the key points that are associated with the resolution that Board President Sharon Angley read regarding the opposition to the Elysian expansion. To preface the presentation, our position as a Board of Education and administration is one that is kind of dual-pronged in essence. It is strictly financially motivated, but yet, on the other hand, there is also a segregative effect component that we are concerned about as well. So with that being said, just to give you a little background on what the expansion is actually asking for, if you see up on the second bullet point, the Elysian Board of Education passed a resolution on November 13th, 2019, to increase enrollment by two students per class or four per grade over a span of four years totaling 36 students. That breakdown really starts with the impact for us in year one, which is an impact of 24 students. So with that being said, the initial proposal seeks to add four students in each of the K-5 grades for the 2020-2021 school year, which includes those 24 students. But then over the next three years, there would be an additional four students added to each kindergarten class until the maximum enrollment of 324 students is reached in the 2023-2024 school year. Elysian, in their packet, claims to have a 22-year history of educating their students, keeping their mission intact, and being fiscally responsible. Please understand that the opposition to the expansion is not in any way a commentary on the program that the Elysian Charter School is offering to their students. This fine educational program has been intact for 22 years. We are looking solely at the financial and segregative impact on the expansion. We made some changes to this particular slide, and I think because they're in white. If you look on our website, you'll actually see the changes to this. Ms. Good, as a business administrator, can you discuss the change that we made to this particular slide?
Okay, the Elysian Charter Schools' historical fund balance is what I would call a moving target. It goes up and down. What happens is their revenues cannot support their annual expenses. So what they do is they tap into their fund balance and their fund balance decreases rapidly. If you look on our website, you will see a link. We grabbed this information from their 2017-18 annual audit. That's the last audit that is on the website. So you would be able to click on the link that's at the bottom of this screen to confirm the information that is presented in this slide.
So as I said before, there is a dual-pronged approach to the opposition. The first is the devastating financial impact that it would have on the Hoboken Public Board of Education, and the second is the continuous segregative effect that we're seeing and feeling within the Hoboken Public School District and the other schools throughout Hoboken. So just to give you a little context and a little background, this slide provides you with information as to how much funds, how much money comes out of the Hoboken Public School District's budget to fund enrollment in the charter schools. This is important and one of the things that we kind of tried to make clear when we talked to a stakeholder group earlier on is that the slide actually says projected district payments. There is some misinformation regarding charter school funding holistically. As a result of that, the Board of Education put together a comprehensive FAQ regarding funding and the charter schools that you can actually take a look at on our website as well. That FAQ is critical because it dispels some myths. And the first myth that it dispels is that money is a pass-through from the New Jersey Department of Education or the state through the local public school district to the actual charter school. In Hoboken, we actually, as a public school district, pay out to more than three charter schools. We pay out to five. And you can see that the projected payment and the projected enrollments for 2019-2020 were as follows. We do not yet have the projected enrollment for 2020-2021, which is the reason why we're showing what this looks like, just so that you have a little bit of an idea. We do send four children to Metz Charter School in Jersey City, and we also send one child to the Ethical Community Charter School in Jersey City as well. But one of the things that's kind of important on this slide is that you can actually see that the projected payments are coming out of the district's budget. This is really important. So how and where does that money come from? For a public school district that has been in operation for years and years, when charter schools open, that money actually comes out of the tax levy. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that tax levy looks like.
Okay. S2 is a state reduction bill that was passed, I believe it was two years ago. So prior to fiscal year 1920, which is our current year, the district lost, I think, around $400,000 prior to this slide. So in this year, this school year that we're in, we see a reduction of 501,272 from our state aid. And for the next five years, our state aid will be reduced by 771,574, 955,745, 805,042, so forth, for a total of $3.8 million. Now with that, there's absolutely no way for our district to make up that money. We're not allowed to ask the state for it back because they won't give it back. We're not allowed to pass that on to the taxpayers. So we have to find ways to cut this money out of our current budget. So superintendent will decide what programs and/or what other avenues will be affected by the loss of this state aid.
And from a business administrator's standpoint, you can kind of see there or hear that the approach is kind of cut and dry. What can we cut? From a superintendent's standpoint, trying to preserve and ensure that every single program is intact, it comes down to being as creative as possible. But if you look on this slide, there's only so much creativity that we can kind of employ year after year after year in order to ensure that we are delivering all of the programs and services to our students and still being able to do that with this type of loss in state aid. Okay? There are a few things that we do know, and what we know is when we look across this chart, we see what the total enrollment is at the Elysian Charter School. And obviously, we're utilizing this because the opposition that we have to the expansion is to Elysian Charter School. This is also not an act or a public commentary regarding charter schools holistically. We must stay extremely focused right now because our issue is dealing with the loss of state aid and what the effect will be from the expansion of Elysian Charter's proposal. So if you look across this chart, you will see that in 2019-2020, there are 288 students that attend the Elysian Charter School. However, there are 258 Hoboken residents. So for those of you who are not sure how that actually works, Hoboken Public School District is responsible for the payment per student of those children that live in Hoboken, not the children who live outside of Hoboken. Okay? So for us, while there are 288 students, we are responsible for the payment of 258 Elysian Charter students from Hoboken. And when we go across this chart, you can actually see what these totals are going to kind of amount to when adding 24 students, then four students, then four students, then four students. But I think the bottom line to this is, to simplify it, we see a four-year increase in the most conservative manner possible. We did this without including any potential increases. We kept it flat all across. Now, sometimes people will say, but what if the budget stays flat? How could there be increases? There can be increases, and there typically are increases. Increases come from anything, from additional students that are added to a particular charter school who live in the city of Hoboken. It could be if there are children with special programs, and so on and so forth. So that number does in fact increase, and we know it increases because we've collected the average over the last couple of years of what the increase actually is. For us, it's not so much the base of what the charter school payment is, it's the annual increase to the base of the charter school payment that is creating a hardship for us financially. So looking at this in the most conservative manner, we're looking at a $489,383 figure for the 36-student increase. So this is kind of a fairly simple slide to take a look at. Basically, what this is just simply trying to show is that if you look at the percentage of students that the Hoboken Public School District is actually serving, to the pie chart on the left versus the pie chart on the right, you can actually see the grand discrepancy between the percentage of students that we're serving and the percentage of the allowable 2% tax levy that we are permitted to utilize as a result of the increase and the expansion. We're going to show you what that actually looks like. And in the middle, where you see the bar graph kind of going across, that highlights our argument, or our position, I should say, regarding the our argument, or our position, I should say, regarding the segregative impact or segregative effect as the Hoboken Public School District is serving a little over eight times the amount of economically disadvantaged children in the city of Hoboken. So I would like Ms. Good to kind of walk you through the 2% tax levy and what that actually looks like and how that will have an impact on our district.
Okay. So the $1.4 million, $1,449,205, is the amount of money we're allowed to raise for our 2% tax. So out of that 2% that we're allowed to raise, $771,574 will be minus from that money. The Hoboken Charter School will be left with $677,000. The charter school will be entitled to $644,853 of that $677. So that would leave us with a negative impact for our budget. Now, Dr. Johnson needs to maintain programs. I need to know where we could reduce in order to supplement that $293,478. If we're having a loss in state aid, there is absolutely no way that I could see where we can maintain all the programs that we currently have, and we're going to lose our 2% that we're entitled to. So this is a conversation that Dr. Johnson and I will have when state aid is reduced in March, when we get our state aid numbers from the state of New Jersey. The budget that I am currently drafting is a flat budget. Every program that we currently have, every staff member that we currently have, is in that budget. But when the state decides what they're going to give us, then we'll have a conversation on what we will do in order to maintain what we currently have.
Yeah, so to recap it, because I think this is really the crux of the financial argument in terms of the Board of Education. If you look at these numbers, just to recap one more time, the 2%, every school district in the state of New Jersey is permitted to increase taxes. Those that have their elections in the fall are permitted to increase taxes by 2%. Now, there are a few adjustment waivers that school districts can utilize, and I'm going to hit on the enrollment adjustment waiver in one second. But with that being said, that 2% allowable tax levy gives us exactly the number that's up there based on this year's budget. So based on this year's budget, we have $1.4 million-plus dollars to increase in that 2% tax levy. And then if you think about it in the most logical way, because this is kind of how it has to be laid out, $771,574 is coming out of that right away from the loss of state aid. So with that being said, what's left is the $677,631. When we look at that, and then we look at the average of what we've seen over the last two years in the annual funding increase for the charter schools, having nothing at all to do with the proposed increase, nothing at all to do with the proposed increase, just what the average has been, we're looking at $644,853. That's the increase above the... That's the increase above the $10,385,484. Okay? So when we look at it that way, it leaves the Hoboken Public School District with $32,778 out of the 2% tax levy cap. If the Elysian Charter School is granted the expansion, in this first year, that expansion will cost us $326,256, thereby leaving the Hoboken Public School District in a negative position going into the 2020, 2021 school year, with that negative impact being almost $300,000. Okay? So with that being said, that 2% tax levy doesn't have any bearing at all on our programs, the increase in utility costs...
Salaries, benefits.
Salaries, benefits, you know...
Educational costs in general.
Everything that goes along with operating a school district. Now, because I want to make it very clear, there have been people that have said, but isn't there something called an enrollment adjustment or an enrollment waiver? The Hoboken Public School District's enrollment is increasing every year. So with that being said, what's very interesting is the money for those additional students does not come through in state aid. Basically, what school districts are forced to do is to utilize that enrollment adjustment waiver, thereby increasing taxes above the 2%. But with that being said, we don't pick the number or the percentage. Okay? That's pretty clear, right? The Department of Education tells us what that percentage is going to be, and when you calculate that percentage out, we kind of gain approximately $5,000 to $5,500 per additional student. We are not gaining $26,000 per pupil. We are not gaining $10,000 per pupil. We are not gaining $13,000 per pupil. For us, our additional students and our enrollment growth is right around $5,000 to $5,500.
Also note that the enrollment growth waiver, that money is funded by the taxpayers, not the state of New Jersey.
Okay. So the second argument that we had, that we have kind of been thinking about a lot, is the argument regarding the segregative effect in terms of economically disadvantaged children. When we look at our racial and ethnic breakdown in the community, we are beginning to see some leveling out. But when it comes to the segregative effect in terms of economically disadvantaged children, we are not necessarily seeing that yet. The Connors Elementary School, based on our initiative that we put in place a couple years ago to begin to balance our socioeconomic footprint, has resulted in three short years of a reduction from 90% economically disadvantaged children to 62% economically disadvantaged children this year, and that number will continue to decrease as grant and wallet numbers will continue to kind of level themselves out. However, when we look at the Elysian Charter School, even with a two-to-one weighted lottery or a three-to-one weighted lottery, which is coming, the question would be, will we see an equivalent service of economically disadvantaged children? And at this point, we don't see that being possible. Now, why is that important? It's critical because when we look at the service of children who are economically disadvantaged, along with the economically disadvantaged context, comes the requirement of additional programs for children. It comes the requirement of additional services for children. Hoboken Public School District, right now, this year, is servicing 44 children who are deemed homeless, in addition to and not included in the overall 43% economically disadvantaged population. So with that being said, this is very important to us, very, very important to us. So as a result of this brief presentation, we are, as a district, going to be submitting to the Department of Education, just as the Elysian Charter School did, and rightfully so, in their strong position that they need to expand, we, as a school district and a Board of Education, will be voting tonight on a proposal to the New Jersey Department of Education to oppose the expansion of the Elysian Charter School. And with that being said, we have hosted a stakeholder meeting for key communicators. We are educating our PTOs and to make sure that parents are kind of aware of what our position is, and that's really incumbent upon us as a school district to ensure that all of our stakeholders, from parents to community members to staff members, understand what the impact is regarding the expansion. So with that being said, we have kind of set meetings out. This evening, obviously, we have the resolution that the Board of Education will vote on. After that, we will have our key communicators begin a process of also collecting some signatures regarding the position that they may have on the expansion or the opposition to the expansion. We look to submit our package to the New Jersey Department of Education sometime in mid-January, and I believe that the determination from the New Jersey Department of Education will come out at some point in early February. That will give us the adequate amount of time to begin to plan appropriately for our budget moving forward, whether or not we have to plan for that money coming out or that money staying in. We're also reaching out to some agencies and some organizations, such as the NJEA, the Ed Law Center, the ACLU, the Latino Coalition, and some other larger groups, the NJEA, if I said that, the NJASA, NJPSA, solely to provide support for our two positions, which is the financial impact on the district and the segregative impact on the district as well. So with that being said, the Board of Education will vote this evening on the resolution, and we will move from there. We are available, both myself and Ms. Good, for any questions that the community may have or the Board of Education may have. And at this time, Madam President, we are finished with this presentation.
Thank you. Board members, do you have... Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Johnson or Ms. Good or for the committee chairs on any of the committee reports read tonight? No? Okay, moving on. I don't have a president's report tonight, per se, but I do, I would like to recognize one of our board members. Tonight is Jennifer Evans' last meeting with us, and I would like to thank her for her commitment to the Hoboken Public School District over the last six years. Jennifer has served on most of the board committees over the years and has served as the chairperson to both the governance and the facilities committees. Jennifer has always given 100% to the students of our school district and to our community, and I'd like to wish Jennifer the best of luck and some well-deserved downtime after a long run volunteering her time to better our school district and better our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
Can you check or...
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion or items to poll? No? Can we please take the roll call?
Ms. Kana Maturi.
Yes.
Ms. Delira.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
I need to abstain on 9.14 and yes on everything else.
Ms. Kana.
Yes.
Mr. Clufffield.
As much as I am in support of the resolution in opposition to the Elysian expansion, I must also, under the advice of our board attorney, Mr. Gagliardi, comply with my school ethics responsibilities. So I'm going to abstain on 9.23, and I don't want anybody to misconstrue that in any way. So I'll be voting against on everything else but abstaining on 9.23.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. DeCarion.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Pick or Dr. Abraham?
Nobody's on it.
Okay, well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sharon, can I say something?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. This was just quickly, also wanted to acknowledge Jennifer Evans for her years of service as a Board of Education trustee. I'm thankful for our camaraderie and friendship and for the time we served together. I also wanted to extend a thank you to Ms. Evans for her continued service to the district as a district liaison to the Hoboken Public Library. We are lucky to have your continuation in that role, so thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We've been through a lot together, and I appreciate the time and the friendship that we've had over the years.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you, Jen, from the time I started here as superintendent. You've been a committed board member on every committee. I always knew exactly what time on Sunday big questions regarding the board agenda were coming, and it always kind of kept me on track. But I appreciate your commitment and your dedication and your kind of, your support in everything that we've been trying to do over the last couple of years since I've been here, and I would assume well before I was here as well. So I look forward to you continuing to serve on the library board for us and hearing those updates as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Sharon?
Yes, go ahead.
I usually don't say too much. I think anyone who comes to board meetings knows I don't say much at most meetings unless I really feel I have to. And I do want to say thanks to everyone on the board for the vote and the superintendent as well for allowing me to continue to serve on the library board, another great civic institution in this community that serves the people of Hoboken. I've been on this board for six years, and the transformation in this district has been amazing, and I've been incredibly proud to be a part of it. One board member really doesn't do anything on their own. It's all about being part of the team and making things happen. And to see the changes in this district from when I started six years ago, it's almost unrecognizable in a lot of ways, but so much has stayed the same. I look forward to staying involved. I'm incredibly proud to have my children enrolled in this district, and I'll stay involved as a parent, and I look forward to seeing my children enrolled. My oldest will go to Hoboken High in a year and a half, and I'm excited for that. Kind of hard to believe, she was six when I started this, and so I did want to thank everyone, all the support, the support of my husband who's here tonight, my children, and so many people who did support me in this effort along the way. Thank you.
All right, well, that will do it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All we can say, I... Aye. Thank you. That concludes our meeting.